Okay, the Board will now reconvene the public meeting at 6:32 PM. As a reminder, Teresa's attending virtually online, Shawna is excused and Sammy will be here shortly. And the first item on our agenda is the Acknowledgement of Developmental Disability Awareness Month.
Whereas the Corvallis School District recognizes and pays tribute to the significant contributions made in our community by people with disabilities and...
Whereas the Corvallis School District affirms that students, families, staff, and community members should be valued for all aspects of their identities. And whereas developmental disability awareness month grew out of grassroots efforts advocating for human rights of people with disabilities in the 19th century and...
Whereas Fairhaven Training Center in Salem, Oregon was opened in 1907 as the Oregon State Institution for the Feeble-Minded through state legislation in order to institutionalize people with developmental disabilities, including children. And whereas people with disabilities have historically been subjected to institutionalization and eugenics practices in Oregon and nationally and...
Whereas the Oregon Board of Eugenics was passed through state legislation in 1923 in an effort to sterilize people with disabilities, including developmental and mental health, as well as other members of society. And whereas forced sterilization in Oregon occurred until 1981 and was not abolished by the Oregon State Senate until 1983 and...
Whereas National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month was first proclaimed nationally in 1987. And whereas people with disabilities of all kinds have contributed to the history and collective future of Corvallis and Benton County or and...
Whereas Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month provides an opportunity to continue the district's growth and learning about the many contributions of people with disabilities to the nation, world, and local community. And whereas education is a necessary component for creating a more equitable and anti-racist community, nation, and world and...
Commitment to equity and anti-racism. And whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse histories of our community and...
Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Corvallis School District does hereby proclaim March 2025 as well as, oh, 2022 as well as March annually as Developmental Disability Awareness Month in the district and strongly encourage students, families, staff, and community members to establish and participate in local celebrations. And encourage all schools in the district to help highlight this month in grade-appropriate ways, as well as highlight the contribution of people with disabilities to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically and in current times. Adopted by the Board of Directors of School District Number 509J Corvallis of Benton and Lynn Counties, Oregon, at its regular meeting this day, this 24th day, February 2022.
Thanks, everyone. And as a reminder, we continue to read these proclamations every month to reaffirm the district's commitment to what they say. Yep. And the next item on the agenda is Board Member Reports. Do we have any Board Member Reports, Judah?
Bernie and I have alarmingly similar reports because we both went to different robotics competitions. I went to the one at CHS and I don't want to ruin all Bernie's fun, but I was going and expecting it to be extremely cool and my expectations were exceeded. I felt like I was watching a live-action sci-fi movie. It is so cool. So I highly encourage, if you have an opportunity to go, you will not be disappointed. It's really exciting and really cool and it's an unbelievable feat when you think that high school students built each and every one of these robots and they're all so different. So go.
I also echo the, how impressive the two robotics teams were. I went to a tournament up in Salem. And I think what really impressed me was how the business end of running such a complex operation as well. The students were writing grants, they were getting donations, and they even participated in legislative advocacy. And that's all pretty impressive. And I would encourage the Board, if we can, maybe ask a couple of their representatives to come and talk to us about all the great skills that they have. It's really a good representation of our CTE programs and educations as well. A couple other events that I, also I attended, Delta and also DEDI. I think for the DEDI meeting, we specifically talked about the student, what was it? The youth troop surveys, that's it. And the family participation. And I think that's going to be very important and it's a good reminder to the community to participate in that when it's available to them. I also attended the meeting on TDAC where we did the final, I guess, review of the great job that kids did in Oliver, which closed a couple weeks ago. So again, I applaud the whole cast and crew and directors on how well they did. And then finally, I attended another event earlier this week. It was put together, it's in conjunction with the Corvallis Sister City Program with Gondar Ethiopia. And kids from the Franklin School, as well as the Corvallis Waldorf School, did the art for a book that they did together. It's called Hands. And it was very impressive, their participation and the kids got to read sections of the book. And it truly shows the integration of the whole community here.
Yeah, I was able to attend the Delta meeting as well. And I just want to really, I wish Marcie Anne was here because I just want to thank her for such an empowering and rich environment of discussion around community members and staff. And I just thought it was really, I always feel very privileged to be there and honored. And I attended the Sustainability Fair at Eileen there and some different schools representing what they are doing in their schools to show how they are helping our economy, our environment. And Eileen did a great job there, representing College Hill. And, you know, and Kathy Fazer, who I know that was her last day, but I just really want to say thank you to her for such an outstanding job and just really getting a lot of our schools involved, and Kim Patton as well. And I just also, you know, as I talked to each school, each person that was representing the different schools, I was just so impressed that they, you know, I knew it was evening, they had worked all day. I was kind of walking in saying, "You must be really tired." And really, they were very energetic and just excited to share what their schools are doing and what students are doing. So I thought that was really great. And then I also got to attend a special event at CHS the other night where they were, it was the Winter Sports Awards. Our own Sophia was there being represented for her basketball team and the great work that they've done. But we, I'm sorry if I'm taking your thunder, but I'm going to share that we, the foundation honored Elaine Markley, as well as the CHS Booster Club. And just all the amazing work that Elaine Markley has done for CHS as a volunteer. She was there when my daughter was in basketball and she is still there today as my granddaughter is playing basketball. And has just spent most of her life there, seems like, volunteering. And so she received the Stellar Service Award. And then the Booster Club also recognized her and is naming the concession stand outside of the gym in her honor. And so that was really fun to watch that be, watch her be very surprised.
Does Teresa have anything online?
Yeah, thanks. Not much to add. I was able to attend the CHS Open House as they prepared to welcome the incoming eighth graders. And that was really delightful. I got to hear the acapella group perform and that was just really an impressive performance. We have, when I get to experience things like that, I'm reminded about the value of a really strong arts education in our community. And so I really appreciate that some of those kids have been studying music in this community since kindergarten and then they really put on a wonderful performance for all of us. And I was really impressed. I've been in the school before, but never touring it from the parent's side. Just about the extensive programming in the CTE classes that were available. And it was really particularly a joy to see my own eighth grader get very excited about the opportunity to take some of these classes. Reminds me that we can't stress enough the value of CTE, how it contributes to graduation rates. And so it made my heart a little happy that he wants to do woodshop. Anyway, really wonderful job done by all of the staff. And it was really just great to see so many kids excited and buzzing around, getting energized about their new school. So I appreciate the staff staying so long and late into the evening to make that happen. But I think it's definitely well worth it when we help our kids feel like it's going to be their space soon. So I appreciate everyone's work on that.
Thanks, Teresa. And I was able to also attend Delta and that was a really awesome conversation. Appreciate it being part of it and all the work that they do to build community and connection. And I also attended the Corvallis Public School Foundation Retreat yesterday. That was really nice to hear what's going on with them and also to think about ways we can continue to engage with them. So for fellow Board members, I suggested maybe they could reach out to us when they're going to do some fundraising and need volunteers. And that's one other way for our Board to be involved with their Board. So I'd love to see some of us be able to do that. So I'm not sure when that will be announced or what it will be yet because they are very early in planning that. Yeah, super early. It was a brainstorming activity. And then, let's see, oh, the Community Forum. I also attended that and also helped facilitate some of the conversation about legislative advocacy. I was really excited to see how many people were there. Was it like 70? There was about 70, there were 74 people here. The room was full. And really appreciated people coming through and being able to ask questions. And also in a more informal way than our Board meetings where we can't engage in those conversations. And just the amount of work that went into everything. So I just want to say thank you for that. And hopefully we can have more things like that in the future as well. And then also, this is connected to the OSBA. Oh, wait, I also went to the Sustainability Town Hall. I wasn't able to make the full fair. I got the tail end and then got ushered into the room for the town hall part. But it was really cool to see all those efforts happening across the community and also learn more about all the work that's happening across just the whole region, not just here in town, but like in the surrounding areas too, because everything's connected in that way. I was able to go to Salem for the Oregon School Board Association's Caucus of Color and COSA Equity Team combined effort for legislative advocacy. And we spent the whole day in Salem talking to legislators. I talked to seven and one day that was a lot. And we heard from the governor about some of her priorities. The three things that we focused on were the state funding and had conversations about that. And also advocacy for the two special education bills are the other two things we were advocating for. And also accountability, the governor's accountability measure, measures being taken. Our bill that she's introducing and encouraging her to work with OSBA and COSA on helping make those more attainable for school districts is really important. So we had some great conversations there and that's what I was up to. Do you have anything you wanted to report that's not OSBA or, well, that was part of OSBA, but I'd said, but... Welcome, Sammy.
Thank you. Apologies for the Board and the community for arriving late.
I let them know you're going to be coming pretty soon and that we're on Board Member Reports. So if you don't have anything, it's okay. But if you have anything you wanted to report, we're still there.
OSBA or General Reports?
General Reports.
General Reports. Oliver was amazing, moving, and really impressive. So want to thank the students for making a phenomenal show and looking forward for the next one.
And we went over a couple minutes, sorry about that, everyone. We're on the, but we did have, we were doing a lot of things. So keep inviting us to stuff. And we say Board Members like going to things we do. Sometimes we can't make them. I was really sad to miss the robotics ones, for example, for niece and nephew birthday parties. But I would love to go to one in the future too. So keep inviting us for those. And then the next item on the agenda is the OSBA and NSBA updates. And so I talked about the legislative day as my involvement there. But in general, OSBA is focusing on the long session with all the, there's tons of bills that impact education and they're keeping track of all of those and finding ways for Board Members to be involved in helping advocate for the communities that we represent. And so I appreciate all that work they're doing. And they're also doing some reviews of the caucuses. And that was, I would say those are the main two things I would update from OSBA. Besides all the technical things that would probably be really boring to report on. Did you have anything for NSBA, Sammy?
Absolutely. I want just to share and remind folks about NSBA's involvement, keeping up to speed with what's happening on the federal government, including the most recent federal action by the executive branch, the president making an executive order toward dismantling the Department of Education. It's yet another point... It's yet another point of inquiry for community members, for board members and our colleagues across the states and the nation. And then NSBA is providing resources, how we're navigating those updates and making sure that we have answers of what we can do and what we can't. And also how can we keep our focus in support of our students, no matter what happens. We're standing by each one of our students and their needs, both in terms of fiscal appropriation and in terms of advocating for the policies and the projections that are in place locally, statewide and federally. So that's the updates I want to share about the NSBA. Another update I just received from our partners at OSBA, the PTA Association, that engages parents. They are invited to take part in Advocacy Day as well. So school board members are going to be invited for an OSBA Advocacy Day in April. And parents are going to be invited as well to take part in another one in April. So for those who might be interested in reaching out, they might reach out to their local PTA or happy to share that information with them directly.
Thanks Sammy. I think that date is available. I was just looking for it. And thanks for that reminder too. OSBA also has guidance for districts too and around the many things that are occurring. And so that's really helpful that they provide that guidance for us to keep supporting the schools in the ways that we do as well. So those are, those ones, I can't find the date really fast. Oh, it's April four, or, no, that's not it. We'll let you all know when we have the date for engagement. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent report, or no, yes.
Yep.
Yes.
So there's a few things I want to highlight and some of them are in process. So, and some of them have actually already happened because we haven't had a business meeting for a little while. So on March third through seventh was Classified Appreciation. That week is meant to appreciate all the classified staff we have in our schools that do everything from lead in our offices to work with students individually, to making sure that our students are fed and supported, making sure that our technology works, making sure that we're able to pay our bills. The list goes on and on and on, the things that our classified staff do. So as you're out in the community, as you always are, if you run into some of our classified staff, please thank them for the work that they do because they, without them, we couldn't do our jobs. And without them, we couldn't take care of our students in the way that we can. So again, while a comprehensive facilities conditions assessment. And that included a walkthrough last week. So we had a couple of different companies come through and provide walkthroughs of the, of Osborne so that they're able to give us a clear proposal on what it would take to bring Osborne back online. They're gonna have that information to us early in April. And so with that information, then we'll be able to better communicate with the community what it's going to take for our community to bring Osborne back. And at the same time, we know that the outdoor pool has started to be used. So there is progress being made and I know that it's slow, but we are making progress on it. And then also, we've worked with the city so that we have some shared communication. So you can find that information on both the city's website as well as our website. So again, we're looking at how do we work together in partnership to continue to work to move that forward. Last week, I had the chance to, along with Shawna, who wasn't able to be here tonight, to go meet with students who came together, including Eileen, to talk about our Youth True Survey. So students came together to talk about the survey, how we use that information, and also how to encourage students to participate in it and give us good feedback because it really does matter and we use that information as we make investments in our budget and ways that we make sure that we're supporting students. And so their perspective in that is really important. But I think hearing from other students that that's really important means a lot more than hearing it from me. So I appreciate our students coming together and working on that. It was our safe groups from our middle schools and high schools that came together and that was led by Nikki and Marcie Anne. So again, that survey is going to start on March 31st. It's coming up soon. And then after that's done, we'll also be having an opportunity for parents and community members to come together to look at the parent survey and help again to inform our work moving forward as a school district. The other day, I was meeting with Marcie Anne and we were talking about recognizing that we have a number of staff in our schools that were students in our district who went through the DLI program. And so we just started to count that number. And we have over twenty staff members in our district who were participants in DLI as students. Everything from an office manager to somebody in our technology department, to classified staff, to teachers. So it's just really cool to see that come full circle. And we sometimes talk about it, but it's just take the time to identify who those folks are. It just feels really affirming of what we're doing in our DLI program. And it was really fun to be able to, to think about that and identify the progress that's being made. And just to think about the rich skills that those folks bring as folks who are bilingual, bicultural and can really add to what's happening in our school. So it's a, it's a real great example of grow your own. Two other things I wanted to highlight. One is appreciation for Attorney General Dan Rayfield. So recently, he shared, made a statement that was shared on behalf of both K-12, college and universities about our ability to continue to support our students and do our DEI work. That was a courageous statement that he made and I appreciate the fact that he provided us guidance in a time that we really needed it. And then finally, yesterday, the Ways and Means co-chairs came out with their budget. It's at eleven point four billion for the biennium. It is pretty much the same number that we received from the governor. So as we talk about that number and what it means for K-12, it's basically the number that we've been using as we've been developing our budget. It doesn't change things for us. The things that would still change things would be if the cap is changed for supporting students with disabilities, that would be a number, that would change our number. But what we have right now is status quo with what we've been planning for. It also included a piece around accountability into the statement from the co-chairs. And when I think about accountability, I think accountability is important. And I also think it's important that we look at the measures and assessments that we're using and having rules in place that have the ability for us to measure the growth of all of our students, not just some of our students with an opt-out provision. I see that as problematic and I think that that's something that we need to continue to bring up and have conversations about because I think that makes a difference as we are looking at the successes of our schools. So I just wanted to provide both some state highlights as well as some district highlights. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ryan? Got you to.
Since that Students with Disabilities cap is up for legislation, could you tell us more about why it's important to, for the cap to be increased?
Yeah, so that cap of twelve percent, which means that there's a second funding, like a kind of a double weight is what we call it for students with disabilities, up to twelve percent. When that was established, that was established about the time of Measure Five back in the nineties. And that was when the state average was about twelve percent of students with disabilities in our schools. Now our number is closer to fifteen percent. And that is a difference in the amount of services that we're able to provide a whole school system by not having that additional funding. And so that funding is really important to us because it allows us to better serve our kids.
Sammy?
So it's maybe a question or requests or a comment on that last point, which is, I haven't seen the co-chair's budget yet, but seeing the number eleven point four, which is slightly more than eleven point six three. Three six? That's still short of the two hundred million dollars that the special education priority bills, including raising the cap, including raising the high cost disability account funding. So if we do not have an appropriation for those bills, the state is going to say to us, you shall fund that from local resources with the same resources that you're receiving. So my request is probably what stories can we come ready with in April that's helped us navigate that complexity? Because we always prioritize our students who deserve the support and who deserve the, those investments, regardless of where's the cap and regardless how much we're getting reimbursements on the high cost disability. But if we are not getting those appropriations from the state and we're getting exactly the same budgets that did not include those, I, I think that we're gonna have really hard decisions and challenges ahead of us.
Yeah, you can't raise the cap to fifteen percent without infusing another two hundred and three hundred million dollars into the system. Otherwise, you are just further diluting the, the overall, well, you're just not making a financial difference. You're just counting more students.
Yes. And when, sorry, and when we do, that's all students hurt because now we're diluting the support, the basic support for all students, including our students with disabilities, correct?
We're gonna continue to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. And at the same time, that becomes more challenging for us to provide services system-wide without those additional funds.
Thank you.
Can I just add in, I'm just gonna add in that if community members are listening to this and this sounds really confusing, feel free to reach out to us for further conversation since we can't really have like an engaged convo on, on it and stuff. So, because it can be a lot to try to sort through.
Yeah, and it's a legislative priority for both COSA, the organization that I'm a part of, and OSBA, the organization that you're all a part of.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan? We have thirty-six seconds, so maybe not. But if you had questions, I would possibly extend it because we are ahead. Somehow we were behind, now we're ahead again. Huh? Okay. Okay, if there's no more questions for Ryan, we have the Student Representative Reports are next and I don't know who would like to go first.
College Hill can go first.
Okay.
All right. There's some great things happening at College Hill right now. First off, the Urban Farm Program has been making all sorts of preparations for the upcoming spring planting season. In our greenhouse, lots of tiny vegetables are starting to sprout. And in the garden, there are two new beds with different types of asparagus, tons of peas. A new native plant pollinator section has been built and a blueberry donated by someone who deposited two Leghorn hens into the farm. Luckily for us, luckily for us, they're great layers and we now have some white eggs to add to the mix. With egg prices as high as they are right now, Urban Farm Eggs are the best deal in town, selling at five dollars a dozen. Next off, the construction students are right in the middle of the micro shelter build season. Currently, they're working to build these structures to provide housing to the people in our community who need to have a place to live. It's very inspiring to see the work these students are completing and their desire to give back to their community.
We just had our first dine-out to raise funds for the College Hill Yearbook at Panera last night. We're having another dine-out at Burgerville on April third from four to eight PM. If you'd like to support our yearbook program, you can mention College Hill when you're ordering and will receive twenty percent of the total price. And there were therapy dogs at our school earlier this week. And it was, it was a lot of fun to get to pet the dogs and see all the students engage with them.
Thanks Harvick and Eileen. Which one do you?
I can go. So congratulations to Ms. Stone for winning the Golden Apple Award. She is the Health and Leadership Teacher at CV and it was a great surprise from the district's people and there were really delicious cookies, so. Swimming sports just started a week or two ago, but there were a lot of great performances from swimming sports the past few months. Despite the tough conditions swimming at different pools, CV's swim team pushed through and demonstrated great sportsmanship and resiliency with the boys winning both the district's and state championship. And then CHIR got their second consecutive state title. Basketball and wrestling also had an amazing season with many individual achievements. And then the second blood drive of the year, placed two weeks ago this week, is having our own madness in lunch periods.
Is Laura's mic fading enough? Just one second. We're gonna get you a new mic. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Sorry. We just want to make sure everybody can hear your awesome stuff you're reporting on. Do you want her to use Bernies for now? There it goes. Thank you.
Okay, and then, where was I? So we had, we are having our own March Madness during the lunch periods as well as the Spring Spirit Week this week. And then CV Robotics has had a great comeback this season. They were among the winning alliance at their first competition, Oregon State Fair, and they recently traveled six hours in a bus ride to Yakima, Washington for their second event. Currently, they're ranked sixth in Pacific Northwest districts and they're hopeful to be able to qualify for nationals this year. And additionally, the leadership class is looking into painting one of the bathrooms at CV. We're currently working on getting it approved and probably finish painting it by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thanks Laura.
So similar stuff as CV as far as sports, spring sports started a couple of weeks ago and it's looking promising. There's a lot of new athletes I've heard in each sport, like track and golf. I know that girls' golf got first place in their very first tournament, which is awesome. So good job to them. And yeah, we had a lot of awesome achievements from the winter sports athletes. I know, I think it was two girls wrestlers and one, maybe one or two boy wrestlers placed in state. And we had quite a few swimmers do really good too. I'm not sure the exact places they got. Yeah, and I know that we're having last week and I think a couple of students finished it up this week too, which is awesome. And, oh, yesterday, we had our Unified Assembly, Unified Basketball Assembly. So our Life Skills Class and even the students from, I want to say it's called Wings at CV, had raised over seven thousand dollars for the Special Olympics, which is, we did that through the polar plunge, which happened, like it was, it was March eighth, I think. So that's awesome. I think we surpassed our goal and what we made last year. So that's really great. And I know leadership is planning the Blood Drive and some other events like flag football and, girls' flag football and boys' volleyball after spring break. This is the second Blood Drive of the year. The first one went really, really well. We had, I think, one of our highest turnouts, which is great. I feel like I'm forgetting one more thing. Sorry. Yeah, I think that's about all I have actually, yeah.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks Sophia and everybody else. Any questions? I think people want to know where to get these eggs though. I think that's prob, don't they usually sell out fast too?
Pretty fast, yes. I can't remember just off the top of my head. Eileen, do you know?
On Fridays, there's a farm stand at the back of the College Hill property. It's like on the, I don't remember the street, but it's behind College Hill.
And it starts at nine? I think it starts at nine.
Thanks Ryan. That way we know how to support the farm stand. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Here you know, public comment. The public comment period is going to open and close. And the next item on the agenda is pages update.
As Emily and Melissa come up, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about this presentation and what has happened with our Twenty First Century Grant. We were all excited when we learned that we had earned that, or been awarded that grant. And lots of really great things have been happening. So I'm just excited for the opportunity to hear more.
How about this? I'm excited to introduce you all to Emily Peterson. Emily has been a teacher at our school since two thousand and fourteen. Emily has been a teacher at our school since tw- two thousand fourteen, when I hired her, um, at Catherine Jones Harrison, and, uh, she has stepped up to become the coordinator of our after-school program. I sit in on every interview that we have to do for the program, and I typically introduce myself as Melissa Harder. I don't do anything, I just supervise Emily, she does it all, and that's really what's true. So, I'm excited for you to meet Emily tonight and have her talk about the great successes of the Twenty-First Century Program.
Thank you. I am Emily Peterson, and as, um, Melissa mentioned, this is my eleventh year in the district. I was a first-grade teacher at Catherine Harrison Elementary, and then, um, after the pandemic, um, started, not ended, um, I did some work with Amy Leeson in supporting our reading intervention program within our monolingual schools, and then last year, school year, I stepped into this position. Um, the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Grant, also known as Pages or Pahinas within our Corvallis School District, runs at Letitia Carson, Garfield, and Lincoln Monday through Thursday after school from two-thirty to five-thirty P M. The grant is a five-year grant supporting Title One elementary schools, really thinking about supporting academic intervention and enrichment within that time, but also, um, providing lots of fun activities to make that happen. And, um, we originally partnered with the Corvallis Environmental Center as our community partner, and you'll hear a little bit about them in a minute. There are four goals of the grant. The first is equitable programming and providing that safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment to students, as well as that academic enrichment, so including those school day, um, and state and local standard connections, so that we are supporting our students in their growth. We have youth development as well, thinking about how we can spark joy and curiosity and connection for students, and then family engagement. So, thinking about how we can support our families and promote that experience to connect them with their students' education and connect them within the school district as a whole. Um, we, as I mentioned, we are at three sites. At Lincoln, we serve second through fifth grade. We currently have forty-six students enrolled, and we have seven staff there supporting those students. At Garfield, we do third and fourth grade, where we have twenty-four students enrolled. Um, and we have four staff, kinda. Um, we are very lucky to, um, have two wonderful Garfield Educational Assistance who stay late two days a week to support our Spanish intervention, and so they trade off their two days, so really we have five, but it's four staff onsite at all times. And then at Letitia Carson, we just expanded to fourth and fifth there, so now we're second through fifth. We have forty students enrolled and seven staff members at that site. Each day, our students follow a structured schedule. We begin by providing supper prepared by the Corvallis School District, um, and so they get a full meal, and then recess, because they've been sitting, and it's time to get outside and move around. Um, our goal is every student outside every day. And then they come in and they have an opening circle where we focus on social emotional learning. It aligns with what all of our K-five schools, caring schools, community, so it's doubling those skills and those castle skills to help support students in their growing community and becoming successful within that community. And then we also are really, um, focused on providing students, you'll see them laying down in that one photo. They're working on mindfulness, so feeling where, um, that all of those feelings were in their body, and so really supporting them and giving them strategies to be able to have that emotional competence and be able to support themselves. We have several community partners. We are partnered with Smart Reading, um, and they are at Lincoln and Letitia Carson. They come once a week. Each student is paired with an adult reader, the same adult reader, because they really value creating relationships to help build that connection. And then every other week, students get to take home a free book, and I love when I show up and they're like, "Look, Ms. Peterson, what book I got." And so, um, they are wonderful partners to have. We have bilingual readers at Lincoln, which has been really great to create that connection with the community. And then we are partnered with the Crescent Valley STEM Outreach Club. So, they come, uh, once at Letitia Carson a week and once at Garfield. It's all the high schoolers have written their own STEM lessons, and they teach a STEM lesson to the students, and it's been really cool to see. And our students are like enamored by the fact that they're high schoolers, like teaching them, and that they're gonna go to that high school, so it's been really cool to have that connection as well. Our other community partners are original partners who are really passionate about the grant, the Corvallis Environmental Center. They send nature educators three days a week to support, so they're another member of our staff. They do all of our staff, um, engagements together. We do trainings together at the beginning of the year. Um, I would say the most notable hit for them is the animals they bring. Um, you'll see Potato the Guinea Pig, um, there, and Pokey Duke the Turtle, and then My Least Favorite Day Snakes. Um, and then they do a lot of cooking activity, finding ways that students can use local ingredients to make their own food, and they get to take the recipes home. So, this year, their favorite so far has been the sushi that they got to make, and so they got to make a, like a California roll sushi, and they were really excited about that, so. It is usually the highlight of most students' day. We look forward to those three days. They really, really do a great job in sparking that curiosity, and even our students, when at first, they're like, "I don't know if I'm gonna like this activity." They end up really getting into it and being able to have that connection to science. And then our, um, one of our rotations each day is STEAM. So, during our STEAM time, we're really diving into topics, one, for a week period or two-week period. Um, we've done space capsules, we've done Northern Lights art. Um, Lego robotics has been a really big hit this year. We are just finishing up our, um, or we're in the middle of our Pop-Tart unit. Students created clay Pop-Tarts, and now they are practicing sewing, and they're gonna sew their own Pop-Tarts after when, or spring break. And so, um, students are engaged in math during that. There's always a writing component. There's always vocabulary introduced, so they're getting that, but they also don't know that they're learning during that time. They just see it as fun, so. Um, most of our projects, we really try to do as a group and work on that collaboration and being partners and that conversation and decision-making. Um, and then one of our rotations is academic. We support reading intervention and math intervention. Our reading intervention is, um, with two different programs. SIPS, which works on learning letter sounds, decoding, and high-frequency words, and then El Proximo, which focuses on the same, but in Spanish. And then we do, um, Bridges Intervention, so that goes alongside what the students are doing during the school day and connecting. I work really close with the school teams in supporting students, and so the M T S S and I are always in contact as they are supporting those scores. And then also, we have really program-specific, um, assessments that we are using to make those instructional decisions for our students. I'm really hands-on with this, as I feel very passionate about making sure our s- staff is in a comfortable position to provide this academic enrichment, but also, um, I love seeing the student growth, which we're gonna dive into in just a second. Um, our hopes is that with our students who need just a little bit more in our program, that we can provide that on top of the school day to further close that gap and get them one step closer to becoming, um, on grade level. And so, we use our district benchmarks to help that. And so, in our next slide and our data, um, I'm gonna dive in here and to explain for a second. So, our schools in the green, um, are our three sites that we have, and Pages is in the blue. So, when we look at our students decoding and putting letter sounds together and creating nonsense words like nan or back, but with a C, um, and all those different, um, blending of words together, you'll see that the average for our schools was six and a half words, um, per minute, and our Pages students are doing it at nine words per minute, so we're seeing that growth and that double happening. And then we are so close with that decoding of real words and that accuracy. We see that happen second, just because they're just almost there with all their letter sounds at this point. And so now we're really working on making sure that we're making real words and that it makes sense. And so we are closely behind with one word per minute, which is really impressive, especially for our students who are reading at a kindergarten or first-grade reading level. And then the accuracy percentage, um, this is something that all teachers feel very strongly about. We don't want you guessing the word. We want you accurately reading the word. And so, um, our schools average of eight and a half percent, um, in their minute reading, and our Pages students are actually fifteen and a half percent in a minute with their accurate reading. So, what we're doing is really working for our second and third graders, and it's really exciting as we look at the district benchmark. That's just like a, a, dipping it in and testing that water so that we know, and then we can really use our program assessments to support our instructional decision from day to day. This data's a little different for fourth and fifth grade, um, because our date, district, um, benchmark doesn't really test decoding after third grade. Um, it's expected as a benchmark assessment that third graders are readers, and so it's a little bit harder to see within our district benchmark, but, um, I was excited to see that we're still seeing that same growth as well. So, students in our schools, um, are reading at, they had the average of growing four percent from beginning of the year to middle of the year, and our students had the average of growing seven percent from the middle of the year to the, or the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. So, our next big step for our fourth and fifth grade students is working on fluency and really being able to read at a rate like you're speaking, but also accurately. So, we first work on that accuracy and then that fluency piece. Um, again, we were really pleased to see how close we are with that fluency. I've sat through many of our, um, reading RTI meetings and being able to see that growth in our students, that those that we're teaching at a second-grade reading level are still accurately reading and have the same fluency in a fourth-grade passage, so we're really seeing that come together. Another part of the grant is that they send out a survey at the, well, I send out a survey at the end of the year that the state would like. Um, and the families, um, at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, a hundred percent of the families said that they feel Pages or Pahinas is valuable and meets their need, their needs and the needs of their students. We had ninety-three percent of families say that they felt empowered to use their voice to help shape the program, um, which was really important to us last year as we were building this from nothing and being able to create something that's going to be meaningful. And then we had that ninety-five percent of that idea of trusting and having that relationship with our program staff. That's also really important to us, cause we're with their student for a significant amount of their day as well, and we wanna make sure that they're, um, feeling comfortable talking with our staff and having those connections. You'll see, there were some quotes from there of just seeing improvement in their students' learning, having them be able to open up and become more social. A lot of these students are going home and playing video games if they're not with us, and so being able to have a place where they're social after school, and then also just making sure they're in a safe location, so that they're not home alone or going somewhere where they maybe shouldn't be, and, um, making sure that we are providing that location for them. And then I did ask, um, students what their favorite part of Pages and Pahinas was, um, and the first girl yelled, "Everything, please don't make me choose." Um, and then, um, Corvallis Environmental Center was a really big hit. I was super excited to see our fourth and fifth grade students say reading group, just because we know at that point their confidence is often affected and that it's sometimes seen as a chore to read, and so the fact that they really wanna do that, um, and then, um, getting to hang out with their favorite teachers, and then just everything about it. So, it has been really awesome to see the kids' growth. We had quite a few returners from last year, so to see how far they've come has been really cool to also see. Now I can answer any questions.
Wow, thank you so much for that report. It's amazing. Um, questions, comments from the board?
How are the students, um, identified to partic- uh, participate? Are they volunteer, uh, parents volunteering, uh, to participate? Or we do some sort of intervention or identification ahead of time?
So, um, we work closely with the schools to identify students that would, um, best benefit from that double dip of getting intervention during the day and with us. Um, our dual-language schools, a lot of them are getting their Spanish intervention during the day and English intervention, so they're able to get both when that's not always the case. Um, so we are, th- this year, we used a lot of the district benchmarks, um, from the end of last year to look at, to identify, and then, um, really working with teachers and seeing who would be the best fit to join.
That's really a highlight of our program, is the fact that Emily's so connected to the schools. She has credibility because she is a teacher in the district, and people know who she is, so she's able to join those, um, uh, response to intervention meetings at multiple schools and have these conversations about students.
Other questions? Do you got one, Sammy?
I have plenty, so I'll start with one.
Okay.
To get back with, uh, what was shared, do you find it, are, are you, are you at capacity where there's a waitlist of the students who meet those benchmarks, but unfortunately they can't?
Um, we are at most of our schools, yes. Um, we have the ability to take in thirty students to a classroom, but in the classrooms we're currently in, that's a lot of stu- one, a lot of bodies in one room, um, and then space capacity of being able to expand and have more students and serve different grade levels. Um, so we do, we, we're like at a one percent no, um, when we ask families if they want to join, so we do have a high rate of those who wanna be in the program. And staffing.
Staffing is also a limitation, yeah.
So, my thought is, this is great, really thank you. This is amazing. And the benchmark you want to compare to is your control group. Are those students who are on the waiting list? Unfortunately, we don't have the resources to get them in. And then the general population.
Yes.
So you can see the growth being made for students who meet those benchmarks and then take, instead of the general population. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no.
So, Sammy likes data, and so, um, I think what you're saying is taking a look at those students who are unable to help and how, I, I hate to think this, but how they're not growing um, in the way that we would like them to, because they're not receiving the double dip, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I have more, but I'll pause until others.
Questions? You have questions? Go ahead and ask more questions then. Can you add five more minutes on there? We have plenty.
Thank you. Phenomenal. What I heard, five years, investment from the state after the five?
It's an investment from the feds.
From the federal government.
This is a, this is a federally funded program that runs through O D E. This is Title Four B, um, federal, federal funding. So, we are, we are just kinda hoping that things continue into next year as they have been. Um, Title Four A, we have those funds that are coming through. I'm, I was just searching, combing for information on Title Four B. I can't find anything, but what I find for Title Four A is that that funding is continuing through the end of, at least through the school year, and that they're not, hopefully that's gonna remain. So, if we're in some way a part of that, we should be okay, but, um, we are waiting to hear from our, um, leadership at the state as to what the future looks like for the program.
Do you know how can we be advocates in sharing those stories? So, whether, uh, the grants continue or not, that those investments continue helping the students?
We, we have to, we need to meet the needs of our students, and we have found this incredibly creative and positive and successful way to do it. And if this federal funding went away, um, we would need to get creative again, and it probably wouldn't look the same, but I know that we're gonna meet the needs of our kids. That's what we do here, so we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
So, I would say that because it's federal funding, um, our best avenue is through, um, through the times that we're able to interact with, um, one of the, or two senators or a representative for our region, um, in either town halls or in emails. I think that's our best advocacy at this point.
Wonderful, thank you. And with permission, last but not least, I wanna say thank you for the investment in giving students physical books. A legislator shared yesterday or two days ago that there's a statistic, eighty percent of children don't have access to a physical book at home. I wanna know how mu- is that true for Corvallis? And also how much we're moving the needle with basically effectively changing that statistic one student at a time for all of the intake, for those who go through that program. for all of the intake for those who go through that program.
Yeah, I don't know those statistics.
I don't know the statistics for Corvallis. I do know that a lot of our students don't have access to what we call good-fit books at home. So books that they can read, that they can practice their reading. When you think about children's books, they're great, but oftentimes their teachers are reading them or families are reading them to their students, right? So that idea that we are providing books that students are accessing and reading. I was pleasantly surprised with the SMART reading. You can, the kid can choose to have the adult read to them or them to read to the adult. How many students really want to read to the adults? And so they're practicing, they're getting twenty minutes of one-on-one time. And so a lot of the books that SMART chooses, they do what's called mirror books. They want students to see themselves within them are books at their level that they can read.
Thank you.
Of course.
Does Teresa have any questions?
No, both of my questions got asked already by someone else. So thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I had a question of can anything that's being learned in these, in this program be applied broadly? Like what can you take from there, do you think? Or what can other teachers take from the program?
I think we have to start getting really creative in how we can teach reading through other subjects as well, right? A lot of my science curriculum, I'm adapting to make sure that they're at the needs of students, which takes time and takes resources. And so being able to have that access is important and being able to spark that joy. And then also, I mean, continuing our intervention during the day and supporting our students with our reading groups. It's working in our program. And so we know it's working in schools. So now how do we continue that at a momentum where we have the staffing and the availability?
Great, thanks. Okay, I think that's all our questions then. Well, thank you both so much and for all your work on that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me double check where we're at. Everybody still okay? Do we need a, do we need a break yet? Are we good? We're good? Okay, let's keep going then. Yeah, I know. The reason I was asking is because we have like another, do we have any public comment on this? Because the next on the agenda is public hearing for testimony regarding the integrated guidance report. Hearing no public testimony. We will move on to the twenty-twenty-five integrated guidance application. Melissa?
Yes, and my.
Oh, and the crew. Hello.
There we go. Oh, wait, maybe not. Okay, well, sure. Okay. Okay, we have a slideshow that Kim's going to put up for you. While she's putting that up, you have the, what you have in front of you, or at least in the board report, was a summary of the integrated guidance that we're going to be submitting to the state by April thirtieth. So that's not the full application, but it's most of it. So we wanted to take some time and talk about the highlights of that focusing on how we communicated with our community and gathered information about needs, what we are investing in and what we're hoping to see as outcomes. So with that, we're up here. There's our agenda for tonight. We'll remind you what the integrated guidance is or teach you what it is if you haven't heard of it before, describe our development of our plan, share our investments, answer any questions, and then ask for your approval to continue to move forward with the plan. So as a little bit of background, just as a reminder, integrated guidance is multiple streams of federal and state funds and initiatives that all come together in one plan where we do all of the work to receive those funds in one fell swoop. And we do it now every biennium. So that's where we're at right now. We are assessing needs, gathering data for everything, and then pulling it all together into one plan in order to get information on the next slide, all of these programs. So who you see here, what we're representing in front of you today is, as we go down the list, continuous improvement planning is something all of us do. Everyday Matters is attendance. That's something all of us do. Career Connected Learning is something that we do, K-12. And then as we get into targeted programs, High School Success is Nikki's area. The Student Investment Account is all of our areas, but tonight I'll be representing that for everybody. Early Indicator and Intervention Systems is Nikki's area. Early Literacy Success and School District Grants is Amy's area. Career and Technical Education is Nikki's area. And Federal School Improvement for Comprehensive Targeted Supports. I don't even know what that is.
It's Nikki.
It's Nikki. It's Nikki. There's so many of them. So if, if we wanted to go through what's kind of is most important to us and what is what we're focusing on tonight, I would turn it over to Nikki to talk to us about High School Success and Career and Technical Education first.
Just give us like a rundown of what those, oh, on each of those? Yeah, of your, your two or three.
My two or three? Okay, so I'll start with High School Success. So High School Success has kind of three bucket areas. So we've got college-level opportunities. So we use funding to support access to advanced classes. So in particular, from these funds, we support students with new materials, which have to be updated every ten years because of the requirements of the College Board. We also do, we support CTE with High School Success funds and then dropout prevention. So a lot of our supports and interventions that we offer at the high school are funded through High School Success. And then EIIIS, that is on there somewhere, Early Indicator and Intervention Systems. We have a system called Grade Guardian that allows folks to look at data from our students and provide targeted intervention. It also pays for some of the staffing that support the data conversations that are happening at the high school. And then CTE, we, while CTE is built into High School Success, we also receive federal Perkins funding. That's regional funding that's distributed based on the number of CTE programs we have. And we have ten here in our district.
And briefly, I think about this time last year, I came to you and Early Literacy was by itself. And it was a separate grant. And now it is included as part of all of this grant. And just a reminder or new information that allowable uses in that early lit grant are purchasing curriculum that's culturally relevant curriculum. You can do training for reading. All this is focused on literacy and reading. Professional development, high-dose tutoring, which is basically some one-on-one or small group very intense and intentional instruction. And summer programs or after-school programs. So those are a gist of the things that we can. Later on, I tell you what we're actually doing here.
And just to make a connection, the Twenty-First Century Program, which just presented, we braid funds from Early Literacy with Twenty-First Century in order to get some, like, more out of our, out of the money that we're receiving. And Emily, who you just met, does training with our staff on reading intervention. So she does that through the Early Lit Grant. High Dosage Tutoring happens at one of our Title I schools because we couldn't, we couldn't lift a program off the ground there the way we wanted to with numbers. So we turned to High Dosage Tutoring, which comes out of Early Literacy. So we're really trying to be creative with the funds that are in front of us. When it comes to Student Investment Account, there are five allowable buckets. Health and safety, increased instructional time, community engagement, reducing class sizes, and well-rounded education. So that's what the state tells us that we're going to be spending that money for. We are your planning team members and also part of this group. We have to have the money people. So Lauren, who's sitting in the back, and Maria Mecaldoney, who's the accounting manager, who is the queen of all grants and all grant budgeting and all kinds of spreadsheets. She's been super helpful in all of this. The spreadsheets that you see in your board report that are downloaded for year one, year two, that's all her work. Nikki?
All right, so I actually think one of the interesting, I don't know if I'd call it fun, but things about all of these grants is that we, we go from looking at, like, we have in our mind what the board goals are. We go out and listen to the community, to, to their ideas on what we can do to better achieve those board goals. And then those are all connected to how we spend our money. So there, it just feels like there's a through line. So one of the things that we're always trying to do is make sure that we have multiple ways for students and the community to provide feedback. So was it last, it was two years ago when we did the, the large community engagement events. And we continue, I am continuing to really engage students in making my plans at the high school level. And so I think on the next page, on the next slide, there we go. One of the things that Lauren and I heard from students when we met with them, we asked, we were asking them, what is the best way for you to give us input? Is it face-to-face? Is it through surveys? And they said, actually, surveys are great as long as they're really focused. And so I've been able to push out some small surveys on Canvas to get really focused feedback from students so that I can then use to think about investments. I've done high school student listening sessions where we ask students what is working. We, we kind of have shared what our investments are and then ask what's working. What, what are some things that we could do better? And I've used that to build the budget. And then we've asked similar questions with staff, including our principals. And, and then with the federal dollars, because those are, they, they come into our region, we are setting goals at the regional level for our Perkins spending. So it's begun. And so for High School Success, there are lots of priorities. One of them is restrooms, and it's really about the restrooms just being more welcoming. Some of our restrooms, particularly at Crescent Valley, are pretty dated. So as you mentioned, we received a request to do some murals on the stalls in some bathrooms. It was actually in the highest-use bathroom areas. But we had already, we're already on a plan because of student feedback to refresh those restrooms with new partitions, new lighting, and new sinks that aren't the old-style pedal ones. So we met with the students and said, hey, we want to do some work on the main bathrooms at Crescent Valley to refresh them and make them more welcoming and inviting. We're also going to be refreshing the ones that are used by the public near the gyms at CV. And then the students will be in this, in the science and CTE is where those improvements will be made. I just met with the students who submitted that facility's modification request yesterday. We also heard that the clubs that we have at school are really important, having alternative pathways, including things like the construction program and the urban farm, which are also funded through High School Success. Access to advanced courses, which I mentioned before. We have both dual-credit and AP courses, and all of our students get to take the AP exams without paying a fee so they can earn college credit before they graduate from high school. Access to relevant materials is something that does come up. So one of the big investments is just making, is in materials and making sure that the material students see and the equipment that they use is up to date. Intervention and support, so we pay for a lot with, you know, we're in a different model than elementary in some of the activities that Amy has described, but we have classes that students are, we, we use data. So I mentioned earlier that we, we are using EIIIS funds for our data system. So we use that data to then look at how students are doing and determine different interventions that might support them to find more success, particularly in core and especially in language arts and mathematics. And then CTE spaces are spaces we continue to improve. Last, over the past biennium, I used High School Success funding to update our culinary space at Crescent Valley, which used to look like a nineteen-fifties, like, home ec class. It now looks like a nice, brand-new culinary space. Over the past month, we have been clearing out our health science CTE space. We will be doing work in that space and installing new flooring over the spring break. And then we will be creating a health science lab and working in partnership with Samaritan Health to have a plan so that our students really have a learning experience similar to what they would have in a, in a CNA or other health science program. And these all came from students, so it's, it's great work.
Two, I don't know. So with our early lit money, throughout the year, I've engaged, back on that community engagement, one of the, I have found most effective ways to get feedback is this called rounding. And I'm sure you've heard a little bit about it, but it's really having a dialogue with one person or a group about what's working well with this, what suggestions do you have, who's been helpful? And, and through those conversations and then through the opportunities that we've provided for staff and mostly with staff, this has been the priorities that have come, continue with coaching and supporting of the implementation of our new reading curriculum because it's new at Lincoln and Garfield and updated at our other schools. We have been doing some Science of Reading coursework, and that coursework is intense. It's multiple hours. It's forty hours of, of time and outside of school. And it's new, a lot of it is new, and it's, we pay the teachers to participate in that and pay for their course that costs anywhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars. And people really liked that. The next step that I'm hearing is they want to come back together regularly to, to continue to learn and to, to be in cohort with each other. And then the other priority I hear about is continued access to intervention materials and then PD around those materials.
The priorities that emerged for SIA are up there, the importance of our nursing staff. For a lot of our folks in the buildings, the nursing staff really takes that pressure off of them for complicated health concerns they have for students. Our MTSS specialists, it's our multi-tiered system of support specialists there in every elementary school. They're looking at data. They're doing assessments. They're all getting trained up right now to do the OSAS testing for the state. But they also create intervention groups, talk to every grade level about their, their reading data. These are the meetings that we just talked about Emily joining so that she can learn more about how all of the students are doing and what we can do in our after-school program, too. Our behavior deans, you know, are new in the last two years, and you've heard reports about that. That was a priority that we heard from our staff as maintaining behavior deans. Any special education support we can provide, our mental health staff and extracurricular programs, particularly not clubs, but also athletics that don't cost any money for our students. So when we went back to this, and, and I think if you remember back to a whole other report I did earlier this year when I was reviewing the full last year of our integrated guidance plan, one of the things we were really excited about is to finally have goals that we could align to that made sense for us. So this year, we were able to update our application to include the, for our outcomes, these four board goals. And for our key strategies, the key strategies that you've already identified. So we feel super in alignment right now with all of that. And all three of us in the three areas that we're looking at have, are using these outcomes and strategies to direct our spending and investment. So speaking of investments.
Yes. So from the listening sessions, these are some of the investments that, that we are going to continue with and add, the restroom refresh being one of them. So you can see a list there of ways that we invest in college-level opportunities. I didn't talk, I was actually surprised that nobody mentioned the Benton County College and Career Fair that we had on March fourth, which was an amazing event for juniors and seniors across our region organized by our two grad coaches, who are also funded with High School Success. We have an advisor committee, which is where we're doing a lot of our, pushing in a lot more of our college and career learning as well. And then a variety of dropout prevention. I've been questioned on restroom refresh as a dropout prevention, but I have heard from students that some of them prefer to go home to use the bathroom. So if we have more welcoming restrooms, then we can keep students at school and improve attendance. And then you can see the others there that I've already listed. And I've also talked about our CTE spaces. One of our goals with our federal Perkins funding is retaining our CTE staff. There are a lot more limitations on those federal dollars and then on the state dollars. So one of the things that we are doing as a trial this year, and I think we would like to continue when we see what the funding is, is machine maintenance stipends. A lot of our CTE spaces have a lot of machinery that require a lot of extra time on the part of our staff. So one of the things we can do is compensate them for that extra time as a retention strategy.
All right, so for early lit, kind of taking off what we heard and what's working well, the key, the main areas we're spending money and we plan to spend money next year. the key, the main areas we're spending money and we plan to spend money next year is with staff, maintaining, maintaining our coaching staff that are bilingual. And also coaching staff, part, part of Emily comes through with this because as you can see, she's, she's quite knowledgeable and really helps us a lot. Continue to pay for those science of reading courses. I think, Ryan, did you already tell them? I think we have like 70% of our K2 teachers have participated in the science of reading course. Yeah. It's, it's, it's super awesome and exciting that we can use this money to pay them and to pay the tuition for it. And then some money in there for materials, continued access to those.
And with SIA, our key investments for SIA include our district nursing and nursing support staff. So we're paying for all of our nurses and all of the little extra hours we give here and there to staff members who support us in health rooms. It's coming from SIA. Our MTSS specialists talked about them. Our mental health therapists are all funded out of SIA. We have a contract with Benton County to, a contract for two health navigators. We pay for part of their, half of their contract and Benton County, the other half. And they're stationed at Garfield and Lincoln. LP, so maybe it's three then. So we pay half still, yeah. So we're paying our half out of SIA. All of our equity coaches, equity toses, who are throughout the district. The district athletics fund, which funds free athletics for anybody, any student, middle school through high school. So we have added middle school sports, which is incredibly popular. I heard the other day that there are 180 kids out for track at LP. So it's, it's popular and it's a way to retain students. It's a way for them to feel connected to their school and to find a trusted adult because I think there's like 10 coaches out there. So hopefully they can find a trusted adult, adult out on the track. And then also to purchase culturally relevant curriculum. So this comes from the state. What are they looking at to make sure that we're being successful in the use of our investments? So you can see that we're measured in multiple different ways. I think the ones that you're most interested in are our longitudinal performance growth targets. Those LPGTs are the things that you're tracking in number one, your number one goal of an excellent learning experience. Third grade reading, graduating in four years, graduating in five years, ninth grade on track and attendance. We have a local optional metric that we've added, and that is the completion of Algebra I, which we talked about earlier. So that is one of our, our local optional metrics that we're also looking at. And, oh, I just said all of these things. So there you are. So this is what's next. We're here hoping that we can get approval for our plan. We'll submit it to ODE in April. They will take that plan and they will review it and they will send it to a group of people to look at it as well. That's the QALP. Then we will meet with ODE to develop our LPGTs for next year. And those longitudinal performance growth targets will be based on how well we did this past year. So we sit with a real data analyst who has a really cool spreadsheet and she helps us develop our targets for next year. Then they'll send out our grant awards and we'll come back and tell you what it is that we're being measured on and what our, our goals are. And that kind of is the conclusion of this part of it. I think the question is next. I want to head off one of the questions because if I don't say this first, I'm going to forget. I want to say that these three giant buckets, High School Success, Early Literacy, and SIA, they come from the state. And there's a lot of conversation sometimes about paying for early lit by carving out of the general fund or paying for something by carving out of SIA funds. Just like we talked about before, that isn't helpful. And these things are working. These are wonderful investments we're making. Our kids are feeling that success. And if we allow the state to take that money from places that we're already spending like general fund, that's not helpful. We would want to advocate for the maintenance of where these funds are coming from and that they're above and beyond that general fund allocation. Just wanted to get that in.
Thanks y'all. Such amazing work happening. Can we add like 10 minutes on? And before we do questions from the board, I wanted to remind the student representatives that you are welcome to stay. And if you need to leave, it's like almost eight. So if you need to leave at eight, we understand if you have homework. But if you want to stay, that's okay too. So just wanted to remind you all that. Okay, questions? Brittany?
When you submit your plan to the state, do they administer the federal monies to? Are the federal specific source funding streams?
That would be your Perkins funding.
Yeah, only for Perkins. And Perkins goes to Dale Moon, who's our regional Perkins coordinator at LBCC. And then we are already like the, all the district and building leads in the CTE world. We meet with Dale every month to talk about our goals that we're going to set and what we think our key investments are. So we're still working on that Perkins plan right now, but that's really the only federal stream in this list.
And I would just add, all of the other federal funds that we receive are different applications. So this is streamlined for this, but we have three or four other. Require different applications in the process.
Other questions? Chris?
First of all, thank you. I know that this is a lot of work and every line item I know is a lot of work. And so I know sometimes we get comments about, you know, cutting people from district office and I wish they could see all the work that you're doing to help all our students and really make a difference. And so I really appreciate that it's very, I know how involved that work is. And so, thank you. Question, how does middle school come into play with all of this?
High School Success for middle school?
We can spend High School Success dollars just down to eighth grade. So we have invested, in the past, we have invested some funding into like alternative pathways and supporting students who may need, you know, may need additional support in order to be successful in high school. So actually, one of the investments I didn't talk about that we do is a transitional math is funded for students coming from eighth grade into ninth grade. We have a math camp that's a couple of weeks long in August to help students find success in algebra. The other place I think where, you know, where middle school does show up is in SIA investments. High School Success can only go down to the eighth grade. And so in those places in the rubric where it shows up, it's like, how do you support students with transition? That's where parts of my position and Kim's position, where, you know, we're collaborating to figure out what we can do to, to meet the success criteria that are outlined in the rubric.
There's not a measurement for middle school except our local option, local optional metric, which is students having algebra by ninth grade. That is fully supported by the middle school. We couldn't do that unless the middle school was doing the work that they were doing. But a lot of these investments, especially my SIA investments, go right into middle school as well.
And initially, when we added some STEM classes at the, at eighth grade, those were in High School Success as well, which allowed us to add those positions in time.
I'd love that you went out to schools and talked to kids and asked them. I mean, that's right, what the core of everything should be around is what our kids want. And so I guess I would love to hear if we could get to our middle school kids and ask them as well. Especially when I hear things like the results are our safe clubs, our pride clubs. I mean, do we have those in, in all our middle?
Yes, we do.
All of our middle schools.
K8s.
Yeah. I would also add that the, the youth truth group that got together last week, I'm losing track of time, Ryan, but it was last week. We had middle and high school students. I did a follow-up today with one of the high school students from Crescent Valley that was there. And the first convening was kind of like learning about youth truth. But what the student shared with me today is how excited they are to actually see the data and then give the adults feedback on the activities that we invest in. Like, oh, that's a dumb idea. Or yeah, this is what you actually should be doing if you want to move the dial. And also help us to prioritize while we have these goals that are aligned out here. There are a lot of things that emerge from our youth truth data that I think really matter to students. And those might be different than the things that matter to adults. And I think that's going to be an important place for both our high school and middle school students to have voice on the activities that we do to try and improve our schools.
Thanks. I have one more question, sorry. How about College Hill? Like when you're doing all this and how does that, how is some of the work that, that's happening involve College Hill students?
Well, Eileen was also at that event. I mean, I did talk about for High School Success, both urban farm staffing and construction staffing, as well as equipment that we've been able to purchase for the construction program in particular has all been funded through High School Success because our students and our principals both believe in the, the value of alternative pathways. Perkins for construction as well. And then Urban Farm got a, I think it was a USDA grant. I can't remember who the grant awardee was last year. And so they've been spending that this year to improve the urban farm program as well.
Other questions? Sammy?
Thank you for asking and answering the first question I was planning for. I want to say thank you for this table. I believe the object codes that maps to every activity and maps to, for every activity is also mapping to what kind of revenue source is. It's something really helpful for us to have this shared accountability, communication with the community. When time comes and the budget document is there, I can actually map both here. So thank you. We're, we're practicing accountability and transparency here. I have a confusion though. The five metrics that you had on the slide, the last one ended with a local metric and there was four mandated metrics. Those are the metrics I'm hearing currently in the Marble Building in Salem saying, this is what we want to measure you on vis a vis the general fund, the state general fund. I'm confused if that is the case and I want to give the bill benefits of the doubt and probably we can contribute with amendments. But if that is true, they're saying we want to hold accountability on those metrics. And if you underperform within a few years, we're going to coach, then we're going to intervene. I think that coaching is already happening within the boundaries of those grants. But if they're going to measure the same thing for the general fund, do we have a systemic issue here?
Feels like it, doesn't it? We, we are already being, we're being held accountable to those standards for all of the funds that we're, we're talking about today. So I, and we're held accountable to those standards for this board. And Ryan's held accountable to those standards when he sits in front of you for his evaluation. I, so I, I guess that you could say there's a systemic problem. Maybe it's, that's a difficult question to answer, Sammy. Yeah.
So how can I frame it? What?
You're going to help me, Ryan?
What feedback would you have regarding, here's what you should actually try to consider measuring with the general fund since we're already doing this work for the SIA and the other grants?
It feels like we're being double measured.
Yes.
Yes.
The other thing I, oh, go ahead.
I think that we, one of the other pieces that we're really advocating for is that in this conversation around accountability, we're also talking about narrowing down the number of reports that districts are submitting because it is easy to get confused between this, while this is a consolidation, there's still significant reporting requirements that we all have to do. And so if this is going to be the thing that Salem's going to focus on for more than one biennium and they're going to look at it in ways that account for high stakes testing, but require everybody to take it. And then we put together a plan like this, and then this department comes in to support that. I think that's all well and good. But in order to get there, we need to have a seat at the table as leaders to be able to talk about what accountability really looks like in Oregon.
Thank you. Just to comment, Nikki, I'm absolutely in love with the fact that you sussed out the bathroom issue. And I just want to say that goes to equitable systems and absenteeism, which are two big things that we're focusing on. So I saw that, I was like, yes, that's amazing.
Thank you. The other thing I was going to add just around accountability related to that question. One of the funds we didn't, well, one of the funds we didn't talk about because I don't really think it's a fund is the Federal School Improvement for Comprehensive Targeted Supports. So both of our high schools are on targeted supports, which is just more reporting on how we're spending money to, to, to support focal groups. So at one school, we, you know, we have, the results aren't as good in testing, state testing for our ELLs at CHS and our students with disabilities at Crescent Valley. And so we're on this targeted support, which just means more reporting.
Not more money.
Not more money. So I do, I do want to say like, based on what I think I heard you say was like, oh, well, they'll identify schools that need more support and they'll be funding to go with it. That is not what we're currently experiencing when we have a group that, you know, is performing at a lower rate than their, their peers. We're just being, yeah, being told to do, do some more reporting. We are, what's, I mean, what is good is that the funding we're spending is built in to improve the outcomes for those focal groups.
Does Teresa have any questions?
I had one question about the, the Algebra I. So I was wondering if I, I think I followed it, but I'm wondering if you could connect for me and maybe for anyone else who, who wants to understand it a little bit better. I know that the benefit, I know there's a benefit to our kids getting Algebra I in, in eighth grade. What I'm not sure about is how do we think that that is contributing to completion rates or better graduation rates or better outcomes in high school? We talk about that being pivotal to reaching that ninth grade algebra benchmark. My question is really about this, is that kids need two years of math, is that right?
They need three years of math, Algebra I and above.
Algebra, okay. So it is, so that eighth grade algebra class is counting toward that even though they're taking it in eighth grade?
No, no. We don't start to transcribe credit until they're in the ninth grade, except when there's unusual circumstances.
Okay. Like what would be an unusual circumstance where we would don't do that?
One that came to me yesterday is a student that's completed through pretty high level math at Oregon State University and is just entering the ninth grade. So we will transcribe their three credits from Oregon State before they enter the ninth grade. That would be one example. Another example would be we had, I, we sometimes have a student who does Algebra I in the eighth grade and then takes geometry in the ninth grade, Algebra II in the 10th grade. That would give them two credits in their ninth and 10th grade year. And then they struggle and have struggled in the math classes beyond Algebra II. And so we've gone back and transcribed the Algebra I credit when needed.
That really was my question. I was curious about for kids for whom that momentum toward math might stall at Algebra II, are they disadvantaged if they take Algebra I in eighth grade where it's not counting toward those three years of math? But you answered that and so that's really what I wanted a better understand. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a couple of questions too. I had a question about the algebra optional piece because it feels like a lot of people feel like that is required as a metrics. And that's one that we're trying to, that we have established here. Is that what you're saying?
Right. It's not one of the five required measures from the state. We've added it as a local optional metric because we want to track that based on all of what we've just talked about.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted to re-ask that for folk because I think that one's looked at sometimes as like tied to our state funding. Okay. And then there was a number that I thought was really amazing in the summary. And y'all didn't put any numbers on the thing and I was like, where's my? Where's my data? Just kidding. Because, well, not everybody's going to, probably knows where to look and stuff like that. And so I hope that people will look at that packet because some of these numbers are really amazing. So I just wanted to point out the third grade reading one.
Yeah.
And going from 38% in 22 to 23 to 51%
Right.
in 23, 24. That's a huge increase. And so I had a question about what do you think contributed to that? But do you think it had to do with like coming out of the pandemic learning pieces? Or do you think there's some of these other pieces too?
I would say yes and yes. I think we're in a, we're, we're starting to see a phase out of the pandemic where kids that missed so many key things in first grade and pre-K and K are, we're kind of coming out of that. And we also did a pretty heavy push on, on reading and, and using our curriculum and doing, you know, before we even had the money, there was a little bit of that. So I'm, it was above our, our target. So it was exciting to see.
It was very exciting. It was very depressing to set that goal for 39%. It hurt all of our hearts. And so when that came back at 51, now we'll get our hearts. And so, when that came back at 51, now we'll get to redo that goal, that LPGT, when we meet with the state.
That's great, yeah. And I think for, when community sees 51%, it's like, this is horrible, it's important to look at what it was the year before. That's a huge jump, and I think that's really significant. And even with the math, even though that's a local one, for it to go up by 3% in one year, it shows that whatever y'all are doing with the, with this plan is working. And I'm looking forward to seeing those continue to go up. Same with attendance went up like 10%.
Yeah.
That's a lot, from 60 to 70. And so, those are like, when people see the numbers, sometimes they don't see the number before it. And so, I wanted to point that out and encourage people to check that report out. My other question was, with all this awesome work, is it only the, so the CTE would be impacted without federal funding? Is that it?
I.
Because it feels like there would be more.
Yeah, it does feel like there would be more. I mean, of course, our, I think our, we've talked about declining enrollment. So, when I think about high school success and all the wonderful things we're able to do in CSD with that funding, I worry about the impact of declining enrollment on that particular budget that comes to us. That's, that's state money. But I have not heard anything yet about Perkins or changes to Perkins, and we're still moving on, like moving forward with, with planning for that grant, like it's coming our way.
I worry about that domino that we've talked about when federal funds are ended, and then we still have kids to feed, and we still have Title I students who need, you know, equitable systems, that we're gonna have to dip into general funds. And what that also means for us and for some of our funding is that we can, we can tier that spending and say, this is what we wanna do, what we showed you up there. But if we don't get the Title I funding we need, then we might be using early lit and SIA to kinda cover that a little bit, which means we get less creative with what we're doing. So, that's, and special education too. So, that's what I, I would kind of worry about.
And pre-K.
And pre-K as well.
Head start.
Head start, which is.
Kids not coming in as prepared.
Right.
That disappears. So, I'm watching it closely.
Yeah. And also, with the Title, Title II, it doesn't look like it's going to be funded at the rate that it has been, which means that we're going to lose, we do all of our math, PD, and all of our, the great work you're seeing with math here has everything to do with that. So, that's a concern as well. So, we have to start, we would have to reprioritize.
That's why I was asking that, about what the impacts of losing federal funding could be. And I would hate to think that it actually will be gone, but it is something very significant, I think, that people should be thinking about in the community, as we hope that we're able to continue to do the awesome work y'all are doing and stuff like that. And I know that everybody will continue to do good work.
Right.
It's gonna be just really harder. Yeah. Ryan, you had something? It looks like you unmuted.
Yeah, I had a question from Chris the other day about summer meals. And so, I asked Kathy to give numbers from last year. So, last summer, and this again through federal dollars, we had served over 6,800 meals, or 6,800 breakfasts, 23,000 lunches, and closer 4,000 suppers across 11 sites. So, those funds are really important for our kids.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just for, for our community to hear, when we are out there feeding kids during the summer, we're also, we have eyes on kids, right? And so, we see what's going on with our families during that time when they're not in school, where, you know, teachers and staff don't have hands-on and, and have kids in their sight and know what's going on in their situations. So, not being able to feed them in the summer is more than just not feeding them, which is huge. So, worry about that.
Thanks, Chris. And thanks for answering that question. And I know it's a tough one to answer right now with not knowing for sure, but yeah. Okay. No further discussion. We went way over. I usually don't go way over. We're ahead. We're, we're actually on the time we were supposed to start this one, so we're good. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the Corvallis School District's Integrated Guidance Application for Submission to ODE.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chris and seconded by Bernie. Is there any further discussion? Okay. It has been moved by Chris and seconded by Bernie to approve the Corvallis School District Integrated Guidance Application for Submission to ODE. And Judah?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
And Teresa?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you all so much for all your work on this, and hopefully we hear good news on that. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we go to the next ones. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's 2024-25 Evaluation, and I'm gonna go ahead and read that right now. The Corvallis School District Board of Directors' Evaluation of Superintendent Ryan Nosse, 2024 to 2025. Dr. Ryan Nosse is completing his ninth year as Superintendent of the Corvallis School District. This past year has presented challenges as well as opportunities to share our district's strengths. Ryan and his team have continued to show they are committed to helping students move towards graduation and prepare for life after K-12 despite increasing state budget reductions and damaging national rhetoric about public education. Data shared offered a lens to see areas of strength and areas of growth. Both are important to keep in mind as the needs of our students in our district continue to evolve over time. This is the first time that Superintendent Nosse has been evaluated using the new board goals. This evaluation has been compiled in a way that synthesizes key items shared by board members. The areas evaluated are the 2023 to 2024 priorities, which is Goal One, Excellent Learning Experience; Goal Two, Equitable Systems; Goal Three, Relevant and Engaging Learning; Goal Four, Healthy Communities. Okay, bear with me as I read, 'cause I'm not the best at reading out loud, so. The executive summary says, "There were areas of growth identified by board members, which were also highlighted by Dr. Nosse in his report. Board members pointed out ways in which they see the district moving towards addressing those needs. Despite budgetary declines, academic excellence remains a priority for Ryan, which is reflected in the growth of students trending in the right direction following the pandemic years. Programs and initiatives that have been prioritized and are evidenced by the Algebra I completion rate increase and the reading score increases in Spanish. It was noted that there is work to do to address serious gaps in learning outcomes, particularly noted for students with disabilities, which were also reflected in Ryan's report. While overall rates are increasing, there is room for growth to help support this upward trend continuing to increase. The board is confident in Ryan's dedication and collaborative approach in addressing those needs in the future, particularly as it pertains to reading." Socio-political tensions coupled with the economic and housing crisis, crises continue to impact students in our district. As a leader, Ryan demonstrates strong dedication to ensuring equity is embedded across all areas of the school district for students, staff, and families. Even still, Youth Truth data reflects something continues to be missing, most notably with Black students. Participation in the Black Student Success Grant offers promise in identifying and addressing these issues. The participation in the Federal Indian Education Grant models the positive impact of these tailored programmatic initiatives, reflected in the significant increase in positive data on American Indian, Alaska Native students in the Youth Truth data. The board noted that Ryan continues to seek ways to support students of all identities and look forward to seeing the district remain committed to these efforts. Particularly, the board is interested in seeing how cross-analyses of data can help identify gap areas in order to address them. Corvallis School District excels in providing ways for students to engage in trades and pre-apprentice programs. The board finds Ryan's commitment to CTE as commendable, which is exemplified by the 99% graduation rate for our CTE concentrators. Exposure to a wide range of opportunity, of opportunities helps prepare students for post-graduation pathways in ways that make sense for them. The board looks forward to seeing increased partnerships with the community to support the continued growth of CTE. As a leader, Ryan has demonstrated a strong commitment to ensuring students have support holistically to the degree possible related to their academic learning, as well as mental health support and physical slash nutritional support. He has also continued to show dedication to listening to and learning from staff related to their wellbeing needs to better ensure that they, that they are and feel supported in their critical roles. The investment in mental health support is noted as a strong area for CSD. Additionally, the board noted that there are areas of concern remaining related to student mental health, and that supportive and responsive learning environments are key to helping address this in combination with existing mental health supports in place. Continuing to strengthen partnerships with community organizations will help ensure students receive comprehensive support both inside and outside the classroom. Dr. Ryan Nosse is described as a strong leader, ethical, student-centered, responsive, and inclusive. The board notes that Ryan has a commitment to transparency, fosters a culture of collaboration and accountability, and thinks out, thinks out of the box for creating systems that support high-level teachers and support staff. Under Ryan's leadership, each of the updated board and district goals are well-supported with concrete examples provided of how the district continues to work toward expand, expanding and enhancing these areas for the wellbeing of students, their families, and staff. He upholds the highest ethical standards, prioritizing equity, student success, and community trust. His recognition as Oregon Superintendent of the Year is a testament to his dedication and the respect he has earned from both peers and the broader education community. The board has confidence in his leadership for the next year as we embark on many critical decisions, where the community is trusting us to make the best decisions with available resources for the betterment of every Corvallis child. Budget decreases, enrollment downward trends, and continued pushbacks on public education supporting students holistically are all a lot on their own. Facing all at the same time takes someone who is forward-thinking and willing to work collectively with the board, staff, and families. Corvallis School District is fortunate to have Dr. Ryan Nosse as Superintendent, not just because he was Superintendent of the Year, but because of his strong and compassionate leadership. Okay, that was a lot to read. Thank you for bearing with me, everybody.
And well, and thank you for that, that evaluation. The relate comes down to the board and superintendent team, and we have a solid team, and that makes a huge difference in my leadership. So, thank you to, to all of you too.
Thanks. Okay. With that, our next item is Consolidated Action. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in Consolidated Action?
I have a comment for one of the items, and I don't know when is appropriate time for me to make that comment.
Pull it now. Which one? Pull it now, which one?
Um, SGE Director.
Which number is that on here?
It's under Executive Team Contracts.
Which one?
SGE.
I don't know.
It's under, um, Executive Team Contracts. There's at the bottom. It's thirteen C.
Thirteen. Oh, Executive Team Contract, oh. Okay, sorry, um, I was looking for the exact wording, thanks y'all. Yes, okay, so exa- we'll take item thirteen C, Executive Team Contracts, anything else anybody has a question about? Okay.
It's not really a question, I just want to say I'm so excited that Byron um, is, is being hired in that role, um, for a couple of things. One is, he was my principal when I worked at Adams, and he was one of the best principals I ever worked with, for. Second, I love that we've hired wi- from within, I think our district stopped doing that many years ago, and then we're doing that again, and I think it just brings people with more passion and, and, um, just, um, somebody that really has a lot of love for our district and has done some really great work, and so I just want to congratulate, but also just really appreciate that Byron's been put in that position, because I know he's gonna do a great job and, and, um, really affect and help a lot of students, so that's it.
Agreed, yes. Alrighty. Um, anything else on that one, from anybody? Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Chair, I would like to make a motion and then brief discuss, uh, brief, uh, comments during the motion. Uh, I move to approve Consolidated Action as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been made by Sammy and seconded by Judah, go ahead Sammy.
I just want to thank Melissa and the board, uh, for us engaging in some really what some folks will call nuanced conversations around policy, but to my understanding, they were very, very critical for us to understand what the policies mean and how some simple words may have a huge impact. And, uh, many of the suggestions that we had over the course, couple of months or more, uh, have produced, uh, those, uh, actions that we are, uh, solidifying here. So really, to the point of the culture of cooperation and, and doing our role as policy, uh, approval, approvers, uh, I just want to thank this board and staff for engaging in some really, really good conversations that's led into those motion, those discussions and, and the policies that we're voting on.
Thanks Sammy, any other discussion? Therese have anything on there? Okay.
No, it looks good to me.
Okay, it has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Judah to adopt the Consolidated Action items as submitted. Um, Judah?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Consolidated Information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss an item in Consolidated Information? Okay. The next item on the agenda is Board Member Comments, does anyone have any comments? Go ahead, Judah.
Sammy's discussion made me want to thank Melissa, because you've had two huge presentations for this meeting and a pile of, uh, policy, and so you've been very busy, so thank you so much, I know a ton of work went into that.
She likes policy.
It's good that Melissa likes policy. Any other board member comments? Okay, I just want to say one thing before we leave is that, um, I know it sounds like we've been chatting a lot about like legislative work and like a lot of things federally and at the state level, um, and I want the community to know that we're not just saying that, it's because we really care about it, and that's why we're advocating for you all and listen to your needs and take them with us, um, into those conversations, so I just wanted to make sure folk knew why we were, we comment a lot about that and report on it, um, and we truly care about doing what we can to make sure your voices are heard too, um, and the needs of our community here in Corvallis, so I just wanted to say that, that way people knew, because I know we do, we did spend a lot of time on it this evening. Um, and with that being said, the meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-six PM, thank you, have a good night.